...of America, in two or three months, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ed has just suggested to me that it's a good idea that we have a moment of silence and out of respect for Boston and the events that transpired down there yesterday, which makes us grateful for living in the community that we do. With that being done, the business of government goes on, as it shall in Boston also. We're passing around our revenue reports. You gonna pass around expenses?
Do we have another one, Kizanchozo?
Is Ian coming tonight?
No.
Did we never heard anything?
I think he talked.
Did we? Reggie, did you talk to Ian today?
No, I didn't.
Those were expenses.
We have the council on aging here tonight at my request, or our request, because there is some concern over the budget, and I'll give you guys a minute to go to the council on aging expense report.
Anywhere that is. Page three. Top of the page.
Council on Aging Wages. The concern is the grant. Which, where does that show, Reggie?
It should be on the revenue side.
Revenue side? The council on aging gets a grant from Franklin Regional Transportation Authority, if I got all the initials right, and for the shortness, it's called FREDA.
What are we looking at this again?
I think it's page thirty.
I see council on aging wages, paging...
Revenue will be in that second package, but...
Five?
On the revenue sheet.
There she is. Hey!
All right.
Ms. Roy. Dr. Roy. Dr. Zines.
Hello, how are you? Did you get my message?
Which one of those... Oh, revenue, page five. Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
Good to see you, got your haircut, looks nice.
Thank you.
Reggie, is this current?
So, we're looking at this here.
Everything's been added into page five.
Council on Aging.
This is the most latest report that we received from the county.
Oh, amazing.
And what's the question?
I don't know.
Those are zero, but we don't know what's expensed.
Yeah. Ladies, I've been led to believe, my tongue is missing, I've been led to believe that there's a shortage in your FREDA grant of $9,000, and that we're concerned over that. It shows that your grants are all zero balances, so the funds have all been expended. Perhaps you can enlighten us? Yes, no, maybe?
Could you paraphrase that question again? I'm not following this.
Oh.
This is all balances zero.
Right.
It comes to my attention that the FREDA, Franklin Regional Transportation Grant that we get for the van out there is overspent by $9,000. First question is, is it overspent?
By $9,000, no.
What is it overspent by?
As of February 28th, it was overspent by about $1,000. Now, the problem with the revolving funds detailed information is that the accountant, they process all the bills for the payroll, the expenses, and then they send a monthly drawdown to up to FRTA to get reimbursed. So, this is not the total amount of the grant that's in the account already, because the town only gets reimbursed as they go along. So, on this one that I had from April 9th, I don't know if the balance is the same, was that negative $2,771.06, is that still the same?
What page are you on?
This was on page eight of April 9th.
My page?
My page eight says CPA.
Are we... I thought I found it. Have we continued to run the van, obviously?
Yes.
Well, we have continued to run the van.
Well, yeah, because, you know, people depend on it in town. Seniors have paid many, many years' taxes, and you're going to get nothing out of the tax money, since, you know, we don't have kids in school and things like that, so we owe it to our seniors to give them at least something. Now, FRTA has said that they will give us up to $24,000 in gross costs. So, for the end of the year, we're only looking at being about $2,000 in the red.
You're saying through the end of the year, $2,000 in the red?
Thirty.
But did I... Did I understand you that as of February, we were $1,000 in the red?
Yes, but FRTA is going to give us more money.
Do we have...
This is because, I just want to... The ridership has increased?
The ridership has increased. Costs have went up with the drivers, with gasoline. Throughout the years, the grant has gotten smaller and smaller.
I can't find a number that I'm comfortable with, they're doing...
I don't see a number. I just see on the revenue side that it's zeroed out. What comes in, goes out.
Yeah.
So, where is your mic? Who told you there was a $9,000 deficit?
One of the council on aging members came to me and gave me the question that we were $9,000 in arrears and, or not in arrears, overdrawn on the grant, and that we'd be looking at that as a shortage to come out of the reserve account, and there was some concern that we were not managing the grant and making cuts to stay within our budget.
All right, so page seven here.
Where are you, revenue or expense?
I'm looking at council on aging van, for lack of any other topic. And the budget provision was, looks like...
Where are you?
Page nine, expense.
Nine?
Six. Page seven, excuse me. And it's talking about percent expended. That's what I always look at, is this thing here, the percent expended.
Right.
So, page seven, expense report, which is number 25. What I usually do is I scan through this stuff, and you look at how much of the percentage. It should be 75% at the end of the third quarter. So, right now, it says it's 130% expended.
Oh, there you go, that's what I'm looking for.
And so, it's 30% beyond the actual for the year.
Right.
Plus, there is still a month and a half left in the year.
Right.
Plus, this was done at whatever time this was done.
This was only through April 15th, and what was not recorded?
And not recorded. So, that shows a deficit of 30% of the budget.
Right.
So, I don't know if that's what they're talking about.
That's what they were talking about. But, and the current estimate was 7,500 to 9,000. Reggie, did you check on something on that?
It's on the bottom of that sheet that I just passed over. What was reported?
Okay, you gotta translate that for me.
I think the council on aging would be the best. Jennifer was the best, because she presented it to the board.
Oh. Jen, why don't you explain this then?
Well, as I said, as of February 28th, we had spent $18,410. Our budget from FRTA was $17,454. So, we still have to go through March, April, May, and June, which I estimate in about $1,900 per month, which would bring it up to $7,600, so we would need for the whole year about $26,000. As I said before, FRTA said that they can fund up to 24 gross, so we would need $2,000. Council on Aging Board on April 3rd voted to ask the finance committee to transfer $1,000 from COA wages to the FRTA account to try to help alleviate some of this. So, basically, we need about $1,000 more to get us through to the end of the year.
So, when did you ask for the transfer?
We didn't ask for it yet. The council on aging board voted on it on April 3rd, but I need to have Rook Phillips, who is the chairman, sign off on it, and I will have her do that tomorrow at the next meeting.
I don't know if you can take wages and turn it to expenses. I think wages are wages out there. Wages, they can move it, but it's toward the end of the year.
All right.
So, it sounds as if the budget was too narrow for the expenses, and the expenses increased because ridership increased.
Yes.
How much did ridership go up?
Projected for FY '13 is 1,449.
That's substantial increase.
How much is your actual increase though? Where, how many rides have you had until now?
That I don't know how to have in my head.
I mean, the first time you gave us was 2012?
FY '14, yes.
Okay. And you have a budget projected for 2014 for 1,400 rides. Am I right?
For FY '13, this year.
Yeah, but right now, we're missing the number for FY '13, and you don't know exactly what that is.
For FY '13?
Yeah, the current year.
I don't know what it is year-to-date.
Oh, okay.
But FRTA, based on the numbers that we've been doing, they said it would be about 1,449 from here.
So, they projected it?
They projected it, yes, because we have to send unlooking reports back.
So, really, it doesn't sound like you're really very much under budget, and considering there's a legitimate reason for it going up.
I'm just backing up a bit, just to clarify.
I'm okay with it.
This budget is not our budget. It's not our tax policy. It's the tax policy from Franklin Regional Transit Authority. They give us X amount of money to take care of the van, the driver, the administration of it, and that, but it's not enough to do... I'm putting this in a nutshell. It's not enough to take care of the additional increases that you anticipate, and they anticipate.
Right, okay.
Will that be rectified next year in the new budget with them?
They're saying that we could get what we have now or less.
What do you mean by now? What they're projected to give you additions this year, or what you already got earlier this year?
The $17,454.
So, we could... Seventeen's the most you'll probably get next year, probably less.
Probably less. So, we have to look at ways to cut costs, if that's what it's going to be, if the town doesn't want to pitch in any additional money. We may have to cut down days, cut down on how many rides we're giving total.
The town been cutting back on the budget? Are you saying the town by...
In FY 2008, we were up to $22,000. And FY 2009 was $22,000. FY 2010, it went down to $18,700. FY 2011 was the same. 2012 was $19,635. And then, like I said, for '13, it went way down to $17,454.
Has there been any adjustments made into the operation of the van, to streamline the operation, to try and...
No. We don't like to refuse anybody.
Not talking about refusing.
Everybody going down to the Bay State outpatient services altogether, instead of just single runs? Like, try to time it a little bit easier?
Well, we try and put rides together as best as we can, but a lot of times, people are going in opposite directions. You might have somebody going to Bay State, and someone else going to Southampton.
Jennifer, is there still a donation for a ride?
It's actually a fair.
A fair?
It's a set fair now.
Wasn't originally a donation?
It was originally a donation, yes.
How much is a fair?
The fair in town to the senior center is $1 a round trip. Other places in town, it's $2 a round trip.
Bay State?
To an adjoining city, it's $3, and to Springfield or anything that's not adjoining Southampton, it's $4.
That's, I mean, my patients that I see, it's like $75 a shop. That's the market cost.
$75 for what?
A ride.
$75 for...
For what ride?
To go from their house in Holyoke to Bay State Specialist, or Cherry, or something like that.
Oh, Cherry, but this is our little bus.
This is a subsidized operation. But I'm just saying, I mean, is it, I don't know if it's subsidized that mo... I mean, I'm just looking at the story.
I don't think it costs that much to give somebody a ride.
It does.
I don't think it does.
I'm telling you it does. I'm telling you, I have patients refusing to go to Bay State because they don't want to pay the $75 to go to Bay State.
We're talking about a van that's mostly going for, like, pleasure rides a lot of times, too, right?
No, no.
Is this all medical?
Well, these are medical.
How can it be $75?
That's the market value. That's what...
Well, you're not saying that they're charged.
That's a commercial.
The market value?
That the patients are charged $75.
That's a retail value. If you want to look at it that way. That's retail value.
It's a retail value.
We're paying, this is wholesale minus.
Jennifer, back on that question again, where does that money get deposited? Is it a special fund, or is it back into the van's fund?
For the donation, or for the fairs, it gets deposited into the FRTA account of the town. And then, when they send that, we just write out a sheet every month, they deduct that, yes.
Oh, okay. So, it's part of the overall revenue stream?
Yes.
How are they gonna tell you? They're promising to cover up to $24,000?
Gross, but they're not including whatever we get for offsets for fairs, which is kind of strange, but...
So, 24 minus whatever you get for fairs is what they may contribute. Is that right?
Twenty-four.
Hypothetically, if you had $1,000 in fairs, they're gonna give you $23,000. Is that what you're understanding?
No, they still give us 24.
So, all fairs in the course of the year is an additional?
An addition, yes. They don't count the fairs for some reason.
So, they're gonna give you...
What do you want me to report?
Yes.
But I thought you said they were giving you 24 minus the fairs?
No.
Okay, so 24...
I always thought it was the amount minus the fairs, but it's not.
So, I just want to clarify this. That money's not sitting anywhere in a separate account? The fair collection?
For the fair, that's in the town's accounting.
But, are you able to use it?
Does it go to the general?
It gets reduced after Friday.
Reduced from what we're putting on the bills of the accountant.
But on their overall budget, they still take into account what the total cost was.
So, does it go to the general fund, or where is it?
No, it's in the FRTA account.
Yeah, Franklin County.
It's restricted because it's a grant. Now, I want to get back to this question, because I have, I've been corresponding with the, what's his town?
Assistant Administrator.
Assistant Administrator of this grant. And at the April meeting, our board meeting, Jennifer reported that we were $7,500 over on the grant.
What meeting was that?
We would be at the end of the year.
April, let me just... April 3rd, we had our board meeting, and she was notified that as of February, we were $7,500 over. At that point, she presented some cost-cutting measures. She didn't really want to reduce the ridership, and ways, you know, we can ask for donations to offset the overage. We can ask FRTA to give us more money. And at that point, I felt that here we were three-quarters into the year, there was no way that we were going to be able to come up with $7,500. And I didn't think, given the budget process, that finance was going to be very happy about us asking them to cover us for $7,500. So, Jennifer talked to Michael, not this Michael, Michael at FRTA, and I presented this problem we had. And if we continue the rate of expenditure between the time that she told us through June, it was going to be $9,000. So, he wrote me back, and he said, "Given the current information from you, that the town will probably not be able to find any additional funding for this year, I think that we should start scaling back from this point forward." That was April 10th. He was gonna talk to Jennifer about working out the best scenario to cut that, and also... He then wrote me, and I think Jennifer got a copy, and said that they thought they could cover some of the overage to the tune of $7,000, but that the town needed to come up with the difference. So, the, there are two, there are two issues here that I look at. One is, how did we, how did we not monitor this grant in a way that we would have had a handle, that the administrator would have contacted us and said, "You're over by $7,500"? And Michael Perot did say that there is a timing issue between the bills that are submitted to the accountant's office, how long it takes them to process, for him to get the information in order to, him to alert Jennifer, or Jennifer, you know, she keeps track of that, too. So, really, you know, in total, the grant was over by $7,500 as of February. We lucked out in the fact that I feel that I presented an argument to them, you know, that we were in a fix. We had already provided these rides, and then Jennifer worked with Michael, and we were able to get $7,000. But we have to make up the difference.
And the difference right now is two?
What she's saying, that's $2,000.
Because in February, we were only about $1,000 over. The $7,500 would have got us through the end of June.
But how'd you go from $1,000 to $7,500, as Nilda's saying?
Because at the end of February, we were $1,000 in the red. So, to calculate March, April, May, and June at about $1,900, that's how we would end up to be $7,500.
But you were, initially, you were $7,500 in the red, right?
When?
April.
Maybe we're, maybe this is apples and oranges.
No, it's June 30th.
So, there's a grant, there's a set funds, right?
Yeah.
And you're saying, as of February...
28th.
28th, you were technically overdrawn, you had overspent by, technically, oh, you're saying $7,000?
No.
Well, you're both saying two different things. I'm just trying to get clarity here. You were overspent by how much?
$1,000 at that point in time.
But Nilda's saying $7,500.
Or just to go through June 30th, then that's what you would be in goal.
But that's what we're looking at.
This is an accounting thing, something, we're not saying the same, we're maybe saying the same thing.
Okay, let's forget about the timing. Let's not look at whether it's...
Next year's budget, I'm thinking next year.
At June 30th, if we continued at the rate of expenditure, we would have been close to $9,000.
Okay.
It would have been, you know, because there's a fluctuation there in terms of activity. Given the fact, we didn't have $9,000, we had overspent the commitment of the grant by that much, or $7,500, let's deal with the reality. So, they've come to us, they've responded to both our arguments, or reasoning, or whatever it is. We need help. We can't go to finance and say, "We need $7,500, that's a significant amount of money."
But this, you know...
So, they're not, they're gonna, they're going to cover. Now, this is contingent on two things. One, that the town also steps up to the plate and supports the council on aging, the van transportation. So, that means that if we need money this year...
Well, I know what you're saying, and I can see getting $2,000 to cover the expenses.
Wait a minute, can you let her finish, because she's, we're following a train of thought here, and I have, I need to hear at the end of that.
So, either the town, you know, there's a two-fold amendment here. One, the town gives us the additional money, whatever that amount is, is it $1,000, $2,000? That's one thing. But FY '14 is still a big question.
That's what I'm talking about.
And the fact is, that they don't have their meeting until May 19 to the 21st, in which case, they're also looking at all the other council on aging's appropriations that they also provide van transportation. And they're saying, "We don't know what's gonna happen, so you can get the seven, you're not gonna get more than 17, but you can get less. What are we gonna do to put in place cost-cutting, scaling back?" Because he said that even if expenses have gone up, the expenses this year to last year were identical, so there was no high peaks in terms of expenditure. The number that went up was ridership, and that's a number we can control, because we can't provide the level of service, and we don't have the money to pay for it, and we can't spend it before we have the money.
Exactly.
And all I say is, we have to have a plan, and I was very concerned, knowing that we had gone to finance with a budget for 2014, which could have affected the outcome of that, or even put other departments or the town in jeopardy, because we had a shortfall of a significant amount.
So, my concern is, what are we gonna do next year? Because I think we can cover this year. Well, Mike, I mean, Dave, and the rest of the board, you can't really consider next year. It's the same thing as the town's budget. If the cherry sheet comes in with a lower amount for our budget, we have to adjust. Okay? And that's, we don't know what's gonna happen. What I wanted to ask is that, you know, when ridership goes up, is it the cost for the driver, obviously? I don't know what that cost is, is hourly rate. Is it the fuel cost? Are you filling the van up at the town yard, trying to get the best deal in fuel? I mean, what is the increased cost?
He said that it wasn't the fuel or any of those maintenance expenses, the...
The $70,000?
It was ridership.
How does that... Just a point of reference to what he said. Our, we buy our fuel. Now, you used to get your fuel from us, and then Franklin County wanted you to get slips. Am I right?
They gave us a credit card.
Okay, that credit card, you're paying top dollar. We're paying, right now, probably almost 35 to 40 cents below the pump price. There's a savings there. Okay? If you go through 1,000 gallons, there's some, there's money. I'm just saying, if, and you never had a problem with you filling it before, this is something that Franklin County told you to eat, and they take the money out of you, you had a better deal buying the fuel from us. We took care of your tires and that, and they took that away from you. They wanted to deal with that. I'm just saying, go back and crunch those numbers, and tell them, "You've given them back their credit card, and you'll get the fuel at the highway department, and you'll save 35 cents a gallon." First, and who knows with your credit card, if you're getting one of these, you know, big-name companies, it might be more than 35 cents.
I got a question before we go on. We're talking about increase in ridership. The paper that I got given, which I think you have on your lap there, it talks about total one-way rides and total undupped rides. What are undupped rides?
Unduplicated?
Unduplicated? What is an unduplicated ride?
Look at how many different riders rode the van during that.
That's how many different riders?
Yes.
So, basically, 133 people are using the van?
No, because they shouldn't be total. That's how many different ones per month, but then each month, you might have some of the same ones that rode on the month before.
Okay, that's confusing.
Ridership should be fairly close to one, for need.
I think we've taken about 40 to 50 different people throughout the year.
Okay, so, let's call it 50 people. 50 people are utilizing the van for 500 trips, for 500 round trips, 933 one-way ride trips. I assume if they need the van to get there, they need the van to get back.
Well, sometimes.
Make them walk back.
So, basically, 500 trips for 50 people, those 50 people are taking 100, 10 trips apiece?
Good. I mean, they go shopping?
Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, that's the number, so...
You know, they have appointments?
This 20, $17,000 grant, and I'm not, I'm just trying to come up, crunch the numbers, $17,000 grant is servicing 50 people for, what'd I say, 100 trips?
Hundred times.
Hundred times. I mean, we gotta keep it in perspective.
There may be, it may come to a time we have to prioritize which trips are more priority, like, you know, doctor's visits and whatnot. You may have to start looking, you may have to look at maybe taking a bunch of people shopping all at the same time.
Do they, do they have a signed day to go to the Big Y?
We used to, but then we only had one person who was going, and then most of the time, I had to move him because of medical appointments.
But, I mean, and I'm just hypothetically, my mother-in-law is on the van in West Springfield all the time, and she only gets to go Tuesdays to Big Y, and if she wants to go to stop and shop, she has to...
They probably have a larger...
It's a bigger, it's a bigger...
Yeah, yeah. East Hampton does that.
But, you know, you can't, if somebody calls up and says, "I want to go to Big Y today But you, you know, you can't, if somebody calls up and says, "I want to go to Big Y today at 10:00", and tomorrow, somebody else calls up and says, "You want to go to Big Y tomorrow at 11:00", we've got to do something about consolidating the trips, I guess.
Nilda, can you find out how much gas difference has been used, how much the fuel cost?
There's a clause right here.
Are the fuel costs in there?
Fuel cost is on here.
The fuel, he told me this.
Fuel cost is $4,182.
There wasn't a peak from 2012.
So we could say in the current grant on that?
Four thousand.
The peak, and this is an email that he sent to.
And the number is a thousand, 1,000 gallons.
Jennifer, is that gas or diesel?
It's a gas.
Okay.
It's 1,000 gallons up until now, this year, so far this year.
That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money.
So if you're talking 30 cents a gallon, that's 300 bucks, or not 300 dollars.
No, it's 300 or 400 dollars we've taken in the course of a year.
And maintenance is fine.
Where's the gas station?
We go to any gas station, they're very hard.
So it's just like a.
Can I ask Nilda again, just, I need clarity. So, when you said you, in February, it was 7,500 over expended based on the grant, is that what you said? 7,500, in February, is that what you said?
That's what was reported at the April 30 meeting.
At the April 30 meeting? So is that in fact true?
There's another cut in the funding.
And she's saying it wasn't, so.
I think we just sit back with that.
What's the difference?
Well, it's, you know.
Was it, wasn't?
It's a number, because the correspondence that I had from the administrator was that, was aware that there was an overage on April 4.
Okay. Generally, you can't draw over a grant. You can't expend.
Well, the way it hasn't been caught up is that the accounting office was behind two months. So they're not posting current numbers.
So that actually wasn't a true number, because they're behind in the posting.
That's the accounting office, I'm talking, not our office, not his.
Well, whoever's office, what, what we're saying is that that $7,000 reported was because the counting hadn't caught up with the correct figure. Is that, is that correct?
I said that there would be a shortage of $7,500 at the, what meeting was it?
February 28th.
Okay.
Well, it was the meeting I was at.
Okay, April 30th.
April 30th. I said it would be about $7,500 under, because that's what Michael Fratton had said. But that would need to get us through to June 30th.
Right, if you're expending.
Not at the February 28th, to June 30th, if that's what we would be.
To the end of the year.
In the red for the end of the year.
Okay. But at that time, how much were you in fact overdrawn?
Well, we had the drawdowns done as of February 28th, and it was $1,000 over.
Okay.
But in the past, I should say, the FRTA did cover the expenses when we went over.
Okay, so did you hear?
We'd buy about $4,000 or $5,000, they let and covered it.
So we could cover by just by fuel cost, close to.
Not $4,000.
Not of the $1,000 that they were in deficit in February, that's getting pretty close, I mean, it's more like.
But the problem is, it's been let to go since February. We recognize the problem in February, we need to take action to correct that problem when we recognize the problem.
We didn't know in February, because the drawdowns were not done.
Well, at least in February, you knew you were $1,000 overdrawn.
No, because the drawdowns were not done yet. So we didn't know until when it was that I got the copy.
But at some point in time, you knew.
Well, it sounds like really very recently.
Well, FRTA didn't start talking about it until they went to say that they weren't going to cover it. Because, like I said, years passed, they already covered it. And then all of a sudden, he says that they're not going to, so it was a shock to everybody. It wasn't like they were purposely over-spending.
Oh, I get it.
And they were providing a service to the residents of Southampton, nobody's getting rich off of this, or putting money in our pocket.
No, no, I don't think they're.
Now, the question is, you talked about taking money from a wage line. You're 70% expended on your wages already.
Now, that wage line doesn't seem to have the increase, the retro increase. It should have been about $1,000.
It's there, it's there.
Yeah, it's right there. Revision?
Is it at $21,724?
$21,724. This is what you got budgeted.
And I think, one of the things that I asked, when the board was considering the movement of the salary, the wages, was that Jennifer had shared with the board that she was talking to the accountant, one, about the wage account, and also that there was an account that was, that there was $21,74 sitting in there, that she didn't know whether it could be released, whether it was.
What's she telling us that?
That's the FRTA account.
Is that the money that you've been depositing here from the fees?
Yes, but Vicki said that David Killson told her that there is to be $2,174.70 to remain in at all times.
There might be some commitment, you have Franklin County.
I asked them, they didn't know anything about it.
He had no idea what that money was for. So that was the discussion that took place at that meeting, so there were some unknowns. And since this report, sometimes, there's a difference between the numbers that are reported on the report, that Jennifer then updates her numbers, so there's two.
They might not have been posted.
We have a deficit this year, how are we going to fix it next year, when we're only going to get as much if not less? How do we fix next year? We might continue the service, I think it's a great service. When I have patients say they don't want to go see the best hematologist in the valley, because they want to go see somebody else and they want to pay $7,500. That worries me as a physician, as somebody representing people in this town. So how do we fix it, so next year that we can preserve the service as best we can and fix the deficit? How do we do that?
Well, according to Michael, and I'm only quoting him, Jennifer got a copy of this email too, so I'm not speaking out of them. It said, "If there is, if there, for you, there is a dramatic uptick in ridership this year, and we need to assess if this is a one-time spike, and if you anticipate ridership or corresponding cost to remain at this level, or even increase moving forward." This is from Michael to us. "From there, we'll need to know if the town is willing and able to cover the cost overage for this year, and if we anticipate ridership to continue to increase, is the town willing to commit to larger local assessment contributions to cover these costs in the future?" You know, he recognizes that there's a need, however, he's also putting it back on our laps and saying, "There's a partnership here, so we're doing so much, you know, things are not going in the right direction in terms of increase, so what can the town do?"
I, I'm a little confused at what you just said. Is he still willing to come up with $7,500? That doesn't bring that into consideration.
Well, you know, there's, because he still has to take in what other towns, what their 2013 numbers, and then what the 2014. I mean, I think that, if he said to Jennifer, and he copied me on that email, that he's not increasing the contract, the grant to '24, he would cover up to '24, which would cover the overage up to $7,000. But if that would also depend on whether there's reductions in the expenditure between now and June 30, which isn't a lot, you know, they aren't that big.
My take on this, and I'm not trying to take anything from anybody else, we have several unknowns here. Are they definitely going to support us with $7,500? We need to know that. If that's so, I believe we all can agree it's going to be between $1,000 and $2,000 difference. We have an account, which we don't know, we can use it, can't you, we need to find that out. And the fourth thing is, if, I don't want you cutting your wages and cutting back services that we have in this building. You know, there was a fight to get it, and to move it to cover bus service, I would be opposed to that. I would like to make sure that would be the last-ditch thing we have to do. But if you find out the guarantee on the $7,500, what the actual definite, $1,000 to $2,000 is, the range to finish off the year. And then, the key is, if that money's sitting there, there's no strings attached to it, we need to find that out. And then it will solve the problem for this year. Next year, we don't know what the feds are going to give Franklin County or Pioneer Valley for the dress, bus transportation, there's been a lot of talk about increasing it, because ridership across the whole valley has increased. So, that won't be known until the House passes the bond bill, and what they're going to support it, for transportation. So, I mean, that's going to be an unknown for everybody, Mike and this town too. So, that's what I just wanted, I don't know if it helps anybody, but I think.
But I mean, could it, would it help for the board to give, say that in principle, we would, that if they would, in good faith, contribute to the necessary funding, if, and we would also support, we would be, like she said, in partnership. We don't know the actual figures, we don't know how much, but how much commitment did they need from us? And can we say that we, in principle, are in agreement that we ought to work together on this?
May I suggest we also have a Plan B in place? It's all well and good to assume that we may get more money, and it may work out, and it may go as well as planned. But we better have a Plan B ready to roll in case it doesn't.
Well, if it doesn't, then we need to know these answers next week, so we can make a Plan B. Because another month, there's not much left to do.
Right. And for the $7,500 coverage?
Yeah. If they're not going to cover it, what are we going to do? You going to go to the reserve fund for a $7,500 transfer?
Well, they said that they would in the email that he wrote me on April 4.
I understand, he may have the best of intentions.
Do you want something and write like an official letter from them?
I would feel better with that, but even then, if the budget falls short, he's not going to have the, he can say whatever he wants. But until he has the money to spend.
Ask him for the check. Because ask him for the check.
Well, I mean, the key is, you know, it's an unknown, we need to fill that in.
Right, we need to find out.
And I personally, I know how hard council on aging worked to get this money. And I remember when you started having a council on aging and the speeches we had to get it. You have minimum funding for wages. We were talking, what, less than 15 hours a week?
Thirty.
And you're going to reduce that? I just think that we shouldn't even think about touching that.
No, 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 they wouldn't be reducing their hours. Because the wage account has a cushion in there, because they're not the budget that was.
I wouldn't tell anybody you got a cushion, well, it's on TV.
I think what we have to do, if I can just summarize, we need to streamline it as best we can.
You're not supposed to tell me not to contribute.
We need to find out whether, we need to find out whether the money's there or not there. And then we need to come up with a Plan B, if it isn't there, where we're going to go from there. And you need to, and you need to get a better handle, not you in general, but just, we need to get a better handle on ridership for next time, and what the grant's going to be. And next time, if the grant's going to be smaller and the ridership's going to be up, we've got to figure a way to streamline that.
What do you for, July 1st anyway?
All right.
And Jennifer, and my take on this, I mean, you're the manager, you're the administrator there. You know, we're going to take a lot of your recommendations to take care of this. And I don't think you need to come in here unless there's a big no from them about that $7,500. But I think you should orchestrate everything through Red and Red to keep us.
But can we say something on our side, like something supportive from the board?
Oh, I'm supportive.
It sounds to me as though they're going to cover it. But they also need to be, have commitment for us, and we're going to pick up the slack, and I don't hear us saying.
They're not going to cover any more overages from now on.
No, but what we already have, I'm talking about what's gone on already, they're going to cover.
Well, I support it, one or two grand, but I mean, $7,500 is getting a little steep, but Vicki's here.
Hi.
Locked in at the wrong time.
The other part that I would, I asked the select board, is if the accounting office is not processing the bills that Jennifer, and there again, I told Michael, because Michael made this point, that he was having, there was a delay between the billing, quarterly, the quarterly, sorry.
Monthly.
Which accounting office, ours or theirs?
Ours. And so therefore, if they were processed more timely, then he would have his bookkeeper update the records. But if there's two months or more that are not being recorded, then he doesn't have a handle on that. And I said to him, "I have no idea how it gets processed, I don't know what the timing of how Jennifer does it, when it goes to the accountant, and we need to improve that. And the accountant's office needs more help, and that's, you know, they need to come to you. But it's a cross-reimbursement contract."
That's Vicki right there, that's it.
Okay, yeah, I know who she is.
All right.
But I mean, is there anything that, I mean, we were talking about the FRT grant, and we're about $7,500 in the red for the year. And there's a concern, as you heard, Nilda, about the billing process to be more accurate. Is there anything you could add to the FRT grant?
For the van?
Yeah.
We're all caught up now, you know, that would probably be by air in December. You know, it would have slipped through the cracks as far as, you know, trying to get all these other things done, I, you know, that was. But we're still waiting for January, February, I just did March. So he has all of that information right now, Fred C. and Warren.
All right, I apologize, but we've gone way over on our time limit on this.
When do they come back? Well, I. I don't think they have to come back until if there's a problem with the $7,500.
Then we're going to have to.
We develop a strategy, but I think Ian had a comment, and I think it deserves some action.
Ian, Ian, I couldn't remember Ian.
I think we need a motion, a sense of the board in terms of support for a partnership with the FRT.
How about a motion that the board strongly supports the necessity for the FRT van and the continued ridership, use of, by the ridership? Well, no, I'm saying.
Then in conjunction, a financial contribution on both sides, that's what they're talking about. They have to hear that we're going to pick up some of the slack at some point, so that they can then reimburse us this year, right?
We're going to pick up some of the slack? No, we already contributed to that van, don't we? Or is this grant totals?
This is a grant that's totally, I don't believe we, we don't contribute anything.
I think they do.
I know we contribute to Pioneer Valley, but I know we contribute anything.
It's a local assessment, I believe it's about $6,670.
Yeah, we contribute to the van.
Yes, you do.
Right.
For the seventeen and close out for the congregation?
Yes, it does.
Well, I think what Ian's talking about, that if, there are shortfalls. And I mean, that we strongly suggest the finance committee to take this under advisement to support your needs over there. I believe that's what you were saying.
Yes, that we are supportive of trying to find a solution without reducing the daily ridership. That we're supportive of trying to find a solution.
Meeting the needs.
To meet the needs of the.
Why don't you?
And you go ahead and phrase it.
No, 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 you need to phrase it, so that we can get a motion that you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that in essence says that the board supports the council on aging's van, oh, I don't know, van.
Expenses.
Expenses. And that we will, in partnership, support in front of finance committee and what have you, that we are, want to work with council on aging in terms of getting, without reducing ridership. That we don't, you know, does that, so somebody succinctly say it.
We support the van.
Hey.
Second.
Reggie, do you have any kind of motion here?
We support the van. Raise your hand if you support the van.
We need to get a motion that you can translate.
We support the services provided by the senior citizen van through the FRT. And we work with the senior council, council on aging, to help make any financial.
Any?
Reasonable financial. Any reasonable financial shortfalls this year, and look forward to making plans to make sure we can meet all the needs next year in the fiscal crisis that's going to come, and when you can't get enough money. How's that?
That was longer than the last one.
That was in the mind, but.
All right.
I second, I second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Amen.
Amen.
From all the reports that you gave to Franklin County.
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you, Nilda.
Your turn to make a motion.
Well, they've been paid so far, except for the March, which is just a minute.
Charlie was here earlier, is he gone?
He's on the hall. We're running late at this point. Hi.
Hi.
How's accounting?
It's a tight, it's a, we don't want to go down.
Yeah, there's a deficit and, how are you? Try to fix the deficit and meet the needs. Vicki, a town always has to do.
Is she here for something, or just for the finance?
Fix the deficit and meet the needs.
Are you here for something, or are you here for finance?
I'm here for finance.
I didn't know whether you had something else.
I thought I'd make it simple, I thought I'd make it simple.
What's going on? All right. We're running behind.
It wasn't on us.
I know it wasn't. I'm not blaming you, I'm just pounding. I'm just trying to get this done.
I would stand up and confront you.
Just remember, the camera's on me and not on you.
And they have to get a picture of that, because that's kind of, they're not going to be able to see that.
All right. Go ahead, let's go. Charlie.
You guys established a public safety.
Thank you, ladies.
You guys established a public safety building committee. But the committee never got a scope of what our charge was. So we've been moving forward with that. Reggie was good enough to draft some material, I'm assuming you guys all saw it. We'd like to sort of give you some insight on a couple of things that we saw on that. And I know you're behind, so I'm going to go as fast as I can go. If you step away from the money, but go to like, the committee created bidding plans. If you step away from the money, but go to like, the committee created bidding plans, so on, so forth, fired that. It lists ambulance, police department, emergency management, should also list dispatch.
Yes.
Because it's not showing there. Uh, the other thing is, the last sentence, the selectmen would like to see groundbreaking within the next two to three years, depending on the site location, I would put funding.
Oh, we put bonding.
Yeah, only because funding would mean wherever.
So we should, is it, would it be appropriate to amend that charge at this point in time?
Well, this has never been established. We, we put the committee out, we started moving forward, we never got...
Right, but amend the draft proposal and make it a final one?
Sure. Mike, listen, draft in the...
Page, uh, tw- thirteen of fifty-two. And, and change it from a draft to a final proposal and get it done?
I, I just have, um, everything else is fine in here. The only problem I have is the committee has a fifty-thousand-dollar budget. I don't know what that fifty-thousand-dollar budget, it's not engineering, and it's not, uh, bid documents. I'd like to know what that is.
Okay, actually, I gave her my copy. What we're looking at here is, if we're going to start moving forward with this, the first thing we need to do is get our ducks in order relative to the property. The first property that the committee originally focused on was the property behind the town hall. The problem with that, that's why you see this map, that's the property we're talking about, is that the dear deeds are unclear as to where the boundaries are and if there's any deed restrictions. So when this fifty-thousand dollars is allocated, the first phase would be to take it, do a survey, and get the deed rewritten, and get the deed recorded. And if we come across any restrictions on this land that we're not aware of, then we'll know whether we need to go further.
So you need money for legal, you need a survey and a legal title search?
Right. Once that's done, and if that's okay, then the next thing is going to be doing a perk test to see if we have soil suitable to support a building, and a wetland de-implantation to determine if there's enough land mass there to do it. Then if that works, then the next phase would be to put RFP together to hire a consultant versed in these types of projects to actually put the preliminary design together for us on here, and probably the other two sites that we're thinking of.
Well, you only, you only talked about one site, but you've got three sites.
Right.
You, I mean, you have a budget for all three sites?
We don't believe, and it's hard to tell because we don't know what the bidding's going to be, if that fifty thousand's going to be enough. And that's sort of open-ended, but because this was the priority site based on the prior committee, this is where we want to focus. If it comes back saying this isn't going to work, the town at least ends up with a workable deed on the property and boundaries.
Isn't one of the deeds referred to a piece of property that's down in the antiques?
One of the deeds refers to a piece of property that's going up that long hill of Route Ten, just past the golf course on the side, and it talks about it being a trust. And it's not this parcel at all.
It's all messed up, as it is.
Another deed talks about the fact that the fire station, which was Schoolhouse Seven, used to have a road that bisected between here and this building.
That was Maple Street. We found it when we booked this.
Then it called and moved Maple Street to the other side of the building.
Single-handedly.
No, I think John Garska did. You know, I told you guys to watch him.
Well, are you, are you, the fifty thousand, are you thinking?
I, my own thing is, I mean, you need to, you're going to go to town meeting and ask for fifty thousand dollars. If you don't know what you're going to use it for, that's a lot of money. We asked for twenty-five to do a feasibility study, and there's still eight or nine thousand dollars left in there. We need to develop a budget and say, X is going to be for survey on the three parcels, so much for exploratory site work for your septic and that. And then the third one will probably be, um, entertaining consultants. But you need to define a budget, because I think if you just say, we're going to do fifty thousand dollars for this, where's the end, where's the beginning, what are you going to define, what are you going to do with it?
So what you're looking for is a more detailed estimate of cost?
I mean, if you don't do it here, they're not going to give you the money at town meeting without a detailed cost.
That's what I'm saying, that's what you're thinking, a more detailed, so in other words...
Not down to the penny.
Five thousand dollars for legal, five thousand dollars for survey, five thousand dollars for...
You got a D-search, you know?
That's fine. We don't have...
We don't have an article for this, yeah. We don't have an article for this.
No, we just have fifty thousand, right?
Not yet, either or, whatever you decide.
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't have a, there is a town meeting article for this, okay.
We have an article, we just may have to change, you go as amend the warrant, the article at the town meeting too. I mean, you could say, we asked for fifty, but actually we only want thirty-two.
Well, you can ask for fifty, as long as they're prepared to say, and we have an estimate of, it's five for this, and five for that, and five for this, and this is where the fifty's going.
Right. I don't have a problem with the fifty thousand, I just want to make sure if somebody is able to define what the fifty thousand is and where it's going.
Right.
Because you might have some things that are going to be less, and I would think that once you hit, you know, the project is complete, you've got eight thousand left in there, that money needs to come back for some, something else. Maybe back to the project, but...
That committee's been dissolved, that, so that eight should come back to us anyway.
Whatever's there, I don't know.
Feasibility study, where's that? There's eight grants kicking around, the council?
That should, that should come back, because that committee's now disbanded, and they can't spend it.
What, that wasn't?
The committee that did the feasibility study on the old town hall.
Oh, is that committee? I thought it was their committee.
No, we didn't have the money.
No.
Oh, I thought it was they, I didn't know.
We didn't have the money.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm not going to give a chat. Before the selectmen ran that committee, I think, I think they did.
All right, so, so...
Wasn't on us.
So you don't have a problem with the fifty thousand, it's just for the town meeting purposes, you think, we need a better estimate of...
Yeah, that's fine, that's the reason we're meeting here, so that we can talk this out, make sure we have some decent...
Do you have a, do we have a problem, does anybody have a problem with the, with the charge making its two amendments that Charlie mentioned?
No.
No.
So do we want to convert this draft charge into a permanent...
Charge.
Charge with those changes made?
Yes.
Yes.
Some of the motions is to do so.
All righty. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
And we'll work on trying to get some reasonable numbers put together, so that we have something to go forward with.
And make sure somebody's from your committee is there at town meeting to...
And then to talk at town meeting tonight, that'd be great.
That's his job.
In the meantime, is that just for purpose of illustration tonight, or did you want to tell us something about it?
Let's only have.
Oh, that was it? Jeez, I thought this was forever.
It's the, you put something out, people...
I was impressed, Charlie.
That I can say whatever I want.
I was impressed.
And you just, it's all, it worked.
You did. Successful. You came in for five minutes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Mr. Martin.
Hey, Bill, how are you?
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Oh, you fall on a truck? Mr. Martin in the Finance Committee. Well, I think we've, we've got a little noise problem here tonight. Got a rowdy bunch.
It is quiet.
Usually, we're here alone. Where would, where are we? FY fourteen budgets.
We just wanted to give you an update, because we're not, we don't have all the committees required. As far as the status that we see, we see them all, but two of them.
Who don't you have?
We don't have the Veterans Agent and the Board of Selectmen.
I was going to say, we're probably the, the other ones.
Yeah. Two big ones.
Two big ones. What's our total budget?
Board of Selectmen. Oh.
Maybe ten thousand, if that?
You have various lines. You have a number of lines.
That's not much.
We'll work on getting that to.
Okay. Yeah, we've been working with some of the departments, maybe with them. One, we just met with Parks, for instance, and there's a thought, and probably it'll be a good one, is that there's wages in the Parks Department, there's expenses, and then we also put a new line item for the, uh, breeze fields, making it, Mark met with us, Mark Reed met with us, and we've got some in there. But all those, all those expenses and so-called wages are money that goes to the Highway Department as you do work, as we...
We draw down on it if we're working there. If we're not working down, we don't touch it.
Right. But one of the thoughts was, does it make sense to transfer that money to the Highway Department, and you're responsible for the care of the fields? Because it seems like we're doing bills.
I, I understand what you're saying, but we did that with the schools. They had about five, six years ago, they gave us the ten thousand dollars. And we're still dealing with the ten thousand dollars, and we're doing three times the amount of work.
But is there a way to...
I just, I would tell you, if that's the scenario, I don't want to do it.
No, I...
I mean, whoever's going to do it, but I mean...
But is there a way to isolate all those things in your budget, Parks expenses, and have the money so every year?
It's just a matter of, of putting them there.
Because now you do a bill, and you get a bill, and you have to transfer the money. We're just trying to cut down labor and K.T. expenses.
No, what, what Joyce does is when they submit the payroll, um, you know, they'll mark how many hours they work at the parks, and they'll just actually charge the fiscal payroll to that account.
So we're spending money to break it out, when if we just paid it out of one account, we wouldn't be spending that money anymore?
That's what we're thinking. I mean, that's, that's our deal, but you guys...
I mean, I mean, it is, if it's, if, if, in reality, the extra work gets taken, is compensated in the future. Because quite, uh, quite honestly, right now, ever since I've taken the job, the Highway Department has, has been subsidizing the park over the year with wages, because there's never been enough money, and even expenses, I mean, uh, we need to put infill material on. You know, the Parks Department's expenses are left to a thousand dollars, if that, and, um, we use that up on infill material.
They were like, ooh, expenses were forty-eight hundred or something like that, and didn't have wages in there, but there's no real wages per day at hiring.
No, we, we charge the account, similar to the way we charge the Water Department and the Transfer Fund. When we work at those things, we subtract it. I mean, I'm, I'm game if you can find a better solution. You want to put it all under one, it's fine, but the only thing I'm going to tell you is, you know, um, it's a feel-good thing if you think you've got it, put it to bed, and if you don't come back and adjust for increases in additional work, it doesn't work. And quite honestly, the way we're doing with the schools, I thought would work, it's not working. We're subsidizing the work that's done there, the plowing and everything else.
But you're talking about having a DPW. Well, at least, yeah, that's a, that's a way to start towards that, at least breaking out of...
Oh, we have a DPW, we just don't call it a DPW.
Right.
So we have to function, sort of like a Highway Department.
We've got to function like it...
We can get all the finances done the way they are, until the town decides we can, we'll change to a DPW, and that's the water mission.
If you want it all under one thing, I don't think it's difficult to put it, like the parks, under, under the highway and leave it as a line item. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. That, that's not a big deal. Because I would like to just, you know, when we're working there, we should, we should draw from it. When we're not working there, it shouldn't be drawn from.
Yeah, but if we do that, then we're still doing that same gymnastics and...
Well, not if it's under the Highway Department.
Yeah, but he's saying leave it as a separate line item, which still means when the...
No, put it under the Highway Department as a line item, Parks wages, no.
Yeah, but so that's, she still has to go and break, get out from Parks wages, as opposed to Highway wages?
But you, my feeling is, you need a breakdown somewhere, because you're going to need to build a budget based on what you're using for hours. So this is a way, it might be cumbersome, but you have a line item that says Parks thousand, uh, five thousand dollars, wages. Those wages are only for the park, and they're going to be only pulled there when the hours are worked there. If you put it in the general highway, they can be used to take care of shortfalls.
Oh, that's right.
That's all I...
Would you want to know how much the park is spending and how much you're...
Yes, you would if you kept, if you kept it segregated.
You have to do a separate line item, because otherwise you're going to be digging through all, like you said, the general highway wages, to pull it all out, and that's worse scenario than what you're...
So have we accomplished anything by putting it under Highway with a separate line? We're not saving it?
You know, I need to check to make sure I can actually do that physically, with the account numbers the way that they're structured in the U.S. manual.
Go ahead.
I have one of those too.
Do we have a chart of accounts that has this as a good reference for each column?
I have one that, that, you know, was, is in the software, but those are based on the Department of Revenue's U.S. accounting structure. And, and the general fund is broken out between certain categories, and that's why you need to report it on the Schedule A in terms of general government, protect and serve, you know, the Fire Department, Police, the Highway Department, Culture and Recreation, Veterans, they're all broken out in certain categories, and that's how it needs to be reported, and that's why the structure is the way that it is.
So that's a common...
That makes sense.
Has to be basically.
Yeah.
I, I think what you're looking for is, we need a description, when it comes down and says telephone, what, what does it mean? Is that the town hall telephone, is that all the parking telephones? It's an internal kind of, this is what the account is, and this is physically what it's paying out for.
So we can actually...
We can understand where the money's coming from, and we have enough budget.
Kind of like a crosswalk, you made the numbers and descriptions, and people can say, oh, this is what I need to put it under. We were finding out things are going under accounts that really aren't accurate, and we really need to bring that up. There's got, got all the, the spreadsheets going, and, you know, we want to make sure...
Oh, you mean the budget parts?
Yeah, the budget part, yeah.
Uh, if we, if we did change to a DPW, DPW, how would that change your lives? How would that change your life, Vicki? Would it make it easier or harder?
I, I, you know what, I have to research it and figure it out. But I guess in my perspective, wouldn't you still want to, the DPW's going to do everything, wouldn't you want to know how much the parks is actually spending?
He's saying he's still doing that as a...
You know, or how much trash they're picking up at the school or at the town hall.
So it really wouldn't change much?
It really wouldn't change much. I would need to allocate those, personally, I think you should allocate those expenses to the department that they're working for.
I agree with you.
Because otherwise, you kind of get lost.
So do we...
Because otherwise, you have one big pot of money, thirteen million dollars, just keep, pay your bills out of it, then you have to research it later, you know?
I don't mean by suggesting that.
No, I know, but I'm just using that as, as, you know, I, I think you need to subray it personally.
So do we, do we, are you saying you don't know whether we can do this yet, or we shouldn't? You know, you're saying you can't figure it out from the chart of accounts, whether it can be plugged in there, or are we saying yes?
The park has to stay under a certain category, under the general fund.
But can it, so it can't...
But it's, it's a different category than...
It's under cultural right now, and I think it's been there for a reason.
It has to be there for a reason.
So we're in a company, oh, Mark?
Yeah, Mark Reed.
Yep.
The Park Commission has three accounts. We have a wage account, which is under the Cultural and Recreational category in the expense reports that we just got.
Just the general fund.
In general fund. We have an expense account, and our expense account for this year is two thousand ninety dollars. And we were in the hole by eleven hundred dollars this year alone, and we still haven't completed this year until July. First, wages, we had forty-five eighty-eight in it, and it does have some monies left so that we can pay the Highway Department to mow the grass and take care of the parks this spring. Hopefully, it's enough. The third account we have is under a revolving fund, which is the Conant Park Pavilion Fund. And that's where the money, when we rent out the pavilion for groups and organizations to have an event, it goes into that. And, um, every year, we seem to just be paying bills out of that account instead of using that fund to do improvements to the park. And I believe, when that was probably set up, it was probably intended so that the Park Commission could do some improvements.
No, Mark, I, I can tell you why it was set up. It was, it was set up to take care of the trash and the cleanup after each, after each event. And then if they did a good job, they get their seventy-five-dollar deposit back. But it didn't bring in, it was only like three or four thousand a year. But when you send somebody down on weekends to clean up, because there's a party on Sunday, you know, there's overtime involved, and, uh, you know, there's trash generated, and it's going to be taken care of.
Mark, is that...
But that, those fees were charged against that. But I do agree that in the past, Dave Kilson would go against that account when the expenses run out.
Right, right.
Hey, Mark, is the twenty-two thousand dollars is the Conant Park Revolving Fund? Is that the amount?
No, no, that's a trust account. You can't pay bills out of that.
Okay.
You can only do capital items under there.[1725.41] You can only do capital items under there.
Right. Major capital improvements.
Can you fix the flagpole?
So, but actually that's the historical commission.
Well, and, and do we need to, I mean, what are we charging for the use of pavilion now?
Approximately a hundred and fifty dollars.
Do we need to make it...
And we've had complaints that that's too much money.
But if we're sending somebody down to clean it up and it's costing us more than that...
So we probably, you know, need to talk to Ed about that. The other bills we have are two electric bills each month and they average about forty-five dollars a month. And then everything else in our budget, whether it's expenses or wages, basically is to, goes to the Highway Department to maintain it, to mow the grass, pick up the trash, repair damaged fields and so forth.
Have we made an increase for next year for Conan Park, or not Conan Park, uh, Labree?
Yes.
No. Oh, oh, yeah.
In our projected budget, we're requesting, um, ten thousand dollars for maintenance and wages for the Labree field, which we have no handle on what's actually gonna cost.
No.
It's a yes. I talked to Ed about it. We came up with that figure.
And, and let's be clear, the, that, those fields aren't subject to use this, this coming year, right?
Correct.
They're, we're, we're gonna let them le, lay fallow for another year.
Piscopo fourteen, we don't need any money in there?
Uh, we're gonna need some money in there. You're not gonna leave it, uh, unattended, but, um, I, I have to get to the contract and see how many cuttings the contractor's required for and, um, when he finishes, we'll have to pick up because the grass will grow. But the activity in the field is not gonna be a draw on wages so much as the maintenance of the existing field.
Next spring.
And, you know, we're gonna have to throw some fertilizer down there too to, uh, you know, make sure, um, what we invested in is, is gonna be a good product.
We should leave that line under.
Well, I, I don't think we're gonna need quite ten thousand dollars for this year, but, um, myself and Mark had talked about the number of ten thousand dollars because part of this budget goes into the next year, which will, will open up in the spring.
Okay, so spring and...
Yeah.
Fourteen.
So we'll be in fiscal fourteen.
Will be getting used, spring of fourteen.
We'll be ten for the, you know, first round. If you guys get back to us in one less, we'll...
I mean, basically, we don't have any major expenses during the winter months. It all comes, you know, the spring, summer, fall. Um, we have...
Well, and we should tell people that there may be an ice skating rink over there, so you may have expenses from now on.
Right.
You may have to plow it.
Yeah, it's hard, but...
You know, I...
There is a small skating...
They used to do share.
Yeah. All right. Um, well, I guess the question is, John, are you asking to transfer the...
That was just a suggestion we talked about and Mark was...
All right, so, all right, so what do, what does the board wish to do with that question?
The suggestion was to...
Well, just roll it under Highway Department as a separate carry like you're suggesting.
Like I suggested, but we, um, we can, needs to verify that.
Right.
If it has to stand at cultural, we have to stand at cultural. And I don't have any problem working with it that way, but I understand what you're saying. It'll give a, you know, a definition of where it is.
So do we want to table it for now until we find that out?
Yeah, just a suggestion for it.
We're still gonna need something to pay for electric bills because I don't think Ed should manage our electric bills. He's got enough to do. They come in each month, so it was approximately six to seven hundred dollars a month just in those, I mean, a year in those electric.
Just like, yes, where, where are the, where do you use electricity?
The pavilion.
Oh.
And we have a, a security light, um, that shines on parking lot in the pavilion behind the library.
And just, Mark, uh, the, the security light that goes on to the, um, One Moon Schoolhouse, that's picked up by the Historical Society.
Right.
Why couldn't that just have been picked up on the general fund? I mean, it's electricity for the town. Couldn't that just be put in the general fund? It's about forty-five bucks a month, so whatever it is, it's not a big...
Well, why is that? Do we need a light over Labree for any reason?
There will be lights.
There will be lights.
And we progress into, when we get to some more money in there to build, I don't anticipate, but I don't anticipate place being open after dark.
I don't see any advantage or disadvantage because they're gonna maintain them separately, but that's...
But it's, it's, it's up to accounting, how, how's Vicky in finance, if, by moving the account from the...
John, John, anything further?
No, but we're still waiting for, for, and we've got some, we gotta go down with the HHS folks again and we've got, by the way, they had a good plan, but it was an increase of like eleven point eight percent, four hundred and sixty thousand almost, we told them. Until we get all the revenue and we're not sure what, what we're gonna have, but it's a good chance we'll be going back to and talking to you some more. Is the number of kids going up up there? No, we're now at fifty-six percent of the school, regional school. Our concern and, uh, not necessarily shared by HRHS because they have a better handle on it, is that when East Hampton opens up or it just might get, so for next year, September is, there can be a lot of kids going from Hampshire to East Hampton Network, East Hampton residence, so, you know, we don't know, they don't know. They're still being very positive and they hope that they're gonna stay because while they, I'll be off up there. What about the vocation, more kids going to Volk or not, or saying... The Volk number being higher.
I think they, they were saying they would that.
Yeah, I know, both transportation and, you know, yeah. And there's a lot going out to the, you know, PBTA, PB, PCs, is that right? Pioneer Valley.
PPA.
Performing.
Performing arts, yeah.
That one and charter schools.
And the charter school.
And we don't get paid fairly for the ones going out to those schools, you know, we paid twelve thousand or so and they go there, but we only get five thousand.
Fees just went up for Smith Volk too, by the way.
How much?
It was fourteen-one and forty-nine-ten for SED kids on top of that, but I'm not quite sure.
It was sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, it was quite a bit. It was a couple thousand bucks.
In regards to that, um, how many students are they, um, projecting this coming year?
Off the top of my head, I don't...
Does anybody know?
I know, we have that. I have it in my office.
Four, forty-five or something like that, is that...
Four, four forty-four.
I don't have a high score.
Four hundred and forty-four kids at Smith Volk?
I was, I think five fifty-six at the, I worry about...
I just wonder what, what's gonna be at Dean Volk, not Dean Volk, uh, Spitz Volk.
I have it in my office.
Does that be, if the numbers go down, it benefits us. But, you know, the other thing too is last year, and I'm not saying, it just seems that we overbudgeted for, uh, this current year. Uh, is that a, a trend that we do and, because if it is, it's affecting other budgets. We're just putting more money in Volk Ed and we're putting it there and, and we're not fulfilling our obligations to other budgets. It's something we should look at and make sure the numbers are real. That's all I'm saying.
But based on preliminary numbers that get sent and...
But they do have a drop dead date for enrollment to tell them how many they're supposed to have.
And from what I understand, HRHS is very firm on that date. Somebody comes in after saying, oh, this is the date, sorry. They do that for budgeting purposes.
I mean, I, I got this piece of information. I know what you got. Reggie sent me, um, a Division of Local Services on Hampshire Regional. I think, did you get that, what they're projecting? Houseways and Means?
I can send you two of them.
You did?
No, I did not.
Set chapter seventy-one?
Uh, seventy, uh, Regional School Charter Commission.
Is that the cherry sheet itself or...
Cherry sheet.
The cherry sheet, we, we have the cherry sheet, but I don't know. You sent it to me.
Yeah, you can get it right off the, um...
Yeah, it was on a webpage.
Is it up or down from last year?
It looks down.
The, the, I don't know about the chapter seventy study, but ours, our local aid is the same. It hasn't changed preliminary, but, you know, the budget doesn't get voted on until July anyway. Not our budget, but the state budget.
No, if the House Ways and Means budget, it'll benefit us more. The governor's budget will hurt us.
Yeah.
But haven't they talked about an increase in local aid? Isn't that kind of out there, a possibility?
Well, there's local, there's local aid, um, for the schools and Dave, you can give that to, that's for Hampshire Regional. But there's also local aid for general services and it looks like we're going down. Not a lot, but it doesn't look like either the governor's or the House Ways and Means is gonna carry beneficial numbers for us compared to this year.
These are all estimated, so it's like...
Make it go for now. The one thing we gotta, uh, remember, we took money out of the stabilization fund and kinda promised to put it back in, budget process, and it's like a hundred and twelve, a hundred and thirteen thousand. And, uh, so we got a lot of money that we've got earmarked for, for budgets that we can't do much with, so. Once we get all the revenue numbers in, we'll be ready to sit down and come back.
John, just a point of clarification, the two enterprise funds, under two enterprise funds, we generate indirect costs, money for you, uh, for revenue. Last year, Dave was going to do new numbers and he never did them, but in anticipation of new numbers, I put five thousand dollars extra in each one of those accounts, which you were able to use. I'm, I'm reluctant to do that until we have hard numbers because the hard numbers we used are the only numbers that Vicky has right now and those are five thousand dollars short, each one of those. I have no problem raising them when I can base it against some hard numbers.
I sort of worked on that.
Okay, I'm not pushing it or whatever, I'm just saying that I want a clarification that they're down by five, but that's because I'm basing on hard numbers that were done before for the benefits.
Correct, because I have to back up to that information and indirect costs are basically your, um, fridges that the general fund pays for, for the water and transportation and any time for administrative functions like the accounting office, the treasurer's office, and then there's a little bit for some miscellaneous, um, uh, insurances and...
It doesn't cover anything on debt service though. Debt service is a budget line item.
Correct.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, that's going your way. Okay, I won't bring it up, but I'm sure David's gonna answer the questions. Uh, it's for the October eleventh storm and do we want to borrow the town's portion and put it in fiscal fourteen budget and pay it down a certain amount over time, like over five years, or take the total amount, right, which is like seventy-four thousand dollars?
Yeah, because you just received that twenty-three thousand dollar, um, our state portion.
Correct.
So that decreases ninety-seven thousand, originally thought was the town's portion to the seventy, about seventy-four thousand.
We can pay it down over a couple of years.
No, um, just so you know, we're still owed roughly about sixty thousand dollars from the Federal Highway Administration.
Yeah, that does improve that, yeah.
But that, that is out there.
Yes, that is still out there.
I don't know when it's coming in and there's no bond bill to push against it and they, they're very slow about doing it.
So, so could we put in the budget like over three years, like you're saying that, and when we get that money back in, just roll that back in and it'll almost offset all...
But this seventy-three thousand dollars is not inclusive of the fifty-one. The fifty-one would stay as a, a negative in the special revolving fund because we applied for that, the state granted it and it can stay there until we actually get those monies back.
And how would you just keep paying it off over a few years? Don is suggesting that it be going out for three years because it's a smaller amount?
Right, I mean, originally we thought it was a hundred thousand, so we can finance it over time instead of taking that lump sum out of free cash. Rates are low right now, so in July, when the note comes due, we could, we could put some into the fiscal fourteen budget. They were gonna pay down, you know, fifteen thousand or, or whatever decided. Put that into our budget, so we pay that down in July and we, and we rebar, you know, re-borrow the rest, you know, whatever's the sixty thousand or whatever's left, how on this side do it, and then pay down some more in the next fiscal year.
What are the rates right now?
Well, I mean, you don't know for sure until you go out to borrow, but historically, you know, they're one percent or less, you know?
I would almost like free money now.
I would favor that, we just...
And you're hoping by the end of the three years, you'll have...
When it comes in, will the board, who's sitting here then?
The money's coming in.
Pay the bills or...
Well, if it's built into the budget, almost like a debt service, instead of just taking it all out of free cash, we can leave that in free cash or we might be able to, you know, use it for something else rather than just taking that big lump and paying it all off.
No, that makes sense. Do you need a, do you need a vote?
Well, it's, it's, it would be up to the finance committee too, you know, for us to build it into our budget so that we have the money in there to do that.
That's, that's what's good about building a zero-based budget. You can put this in for three years, fourth year, if it's not there anymore, and all is gone, you know?
The, the other thing, um, you need to realize too is that we're obligated as a town to pay twelve and a half percent, like the state paid the twelve and a half percent. We just got in at twenty-three thousand. That was the state's portion of the, the feds paid seventy-five, the state paid twelve and a half and we're responsible for twelve and a half, so, of all those costs. So some of that money is, is not like they didn't reimburse it, it's stuff that we are obligated to pay.
Yeah, that we're obligated to pay and that's what the seventy-three thousand and some changes, that's what's left based on the turnaround fifty-two thousand dollars that you decided.
I would support that. If you want to go ahead and draft that up, that'd be helpful. Build in the budget, yeah.
You should probably do it by motion.
I'd make a motion to...
Because if it's for more, I'm agreeing with Tom.
John, do we have to take a motion to...
Sure.
Well, we would like that motion just so we can work out that we're gonna go into the budget, so when we come with it, it's there. I'd like to make a motion that we finance at least over three years. We say in three years? Be roughly twenty-five thousand a year.
Don, just a point of, of reference. Um, are these gonna be short-term notes or are these gonna need to downvote?
No, it'll be short term. I'm just gonna roll it over, you know, roll over every year, what we pay down. Like if next year we decide to pay down a little bit more than we do for fiscal fourteen or whatever, then that's what we'll pay down, so.
There's no pre-penalty for paying earlier, right?
No, because I'm gonna do it one year at a time. If it's less than five years, you can do it one year at a time instead of going out and doing, say, I'm gonna lock it in for five years and this is what we have to pay each of the five years and interest rates always higher, we do it that way.
So is a motion, give us a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And to finance, John, you want to put your other hat on? You want to put your other hat on, is?
Yeah, I wonder what that one is. Thanks, guys. The self-named Town Administrator Review Committee, uh, we met last week. Came up with a list of candidates for the position based on the nineteen applications we have. It's a reminder, we called it on seventeen, so we looked at it and did basically a top ten. So we top five is what we were gonna bring to you folks, uh, from the committees. And the committee had a tough thought and want to throw it up and you can tell me if you want to report with it now. We can give you now the five top candidates with resumes and recommendations, uh, that you would presumably schedule interviews and all that. Or if you wanted to, because there's no reference checks or anything done on these folks, if you wanted the committee to do a first round of interviews and check references and all that and then end up with the top three or whatever that you want, that have already been pre-screened and interviewed, we'd be happy to do that, but that's a decision you folks need to make.
Can we do something in between? Could we get the, the, the five candidates and their resumes and be able to look at those while you go through a screening process or...
Oh, yeah, it's just, once we give to you their public knowledge, that's fine.
So how was the process coming down from, was it eighteen?
Uh, nineteen total, two were thrown out, thrown out automatically because they just didn't meet these embarrass...
Was it a difficult process?
Some would say.
Do you think it was a fair process?
I think it was fair and above board and, you know, everybody, we have five people and we oftentimes have five opinions and, you know, but we got down to a majority on, on the recommendations.
You feel comfortable with those recommendations of the five? Now, Vicky, you were on that as well?
No, 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 no.
It was Ed?
Donna, I'm sorry.
Donna, Dave Sorrell, so two select member, board members, Donna, Dave Sorrell, myself.
Donna, do you feel comfortable with that as well, the process?
Ed? Yes.
Jackie, did you feel comfortable?
Actually, I don't. I'd actually, I'd actually like to make a motion. Um, I believe that Reggie has been here seven years with us and she's done some incredible work and, um, she's helped me, uh, because I was a new select board member and it's been a year and a half and there's not one thing that I have asked her to do that she hasn't done. And I would really like to move to give her a courtesy, uh, interview along with the other members, the other candidates.
So I'm confused, is she not one of the five?
Not one, not five, no.
So you had a, a fair, unbiased evaluation of nineteen candidates and you came up with...
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
And we went on background education.
And you came up with five objective...
You know, we actually went from one through ten or twelve-ish, like, well, the top five is what we said we'd bring forward.
But I, you know, you feel like you did what you were asked to do, you were tasked to do, the committee was tasked to do that in a fair, objective way?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are, are, do I divine a motion in there or...
Yes, you do.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Could you repeat the motion?
I would like to give Reggie a courtesy interview along with the other five candidates for the town administrator position.
So your motion is to include, to actually make a sixth in addition to the five that they're recommending?
Yes, sir.
Does that simplify the motion to make it six?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right, there's a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, I have discussion.
Go ahead.
We were given a charge to look at the education, look at the qualifications, the years of experience, and the board did that. We look for leaderships that are gonna carry this, this town forward. Uh, we were looking for people with experience to do the job that's posted and advertised. I believe the board did an excellent job. There's differences, but, um, we went through seventeen candidates and, uh, we, um, reduced that to five names right now and we order, we, we structured the remaining members and ordered a sequence down to ten. a sequence down to ten, I believe. At that particular point, I don't think it's fair to the people that didn't make the first five to be not given an interview, because now we're changing the rules and the process, as far as I'm concerned. I'm, I'm opposed to, um, um, doing it as a courtesy. If this is a professional job, this needs to be done with transparency and professionalism. And that's why I'm at this point, saying, I believe the committee did a good job, and I'm in favor of the five names, and only the three names.
But Ed, what about the idea that this is based on a person that's been with us for quite a while in the town, under a difficult and stressful situation, and that we're offering a courtesy interview?
But what is a courtesy interview?
I would object to the issue, I, I'm going to speak in a minute, but I would object to the courtesy. That implies that we're just going through the motions. I, I, I would, if, if we're truly offering her an interview, then it's an interview, it's not a courtesy interview. It's an interview based on experience and knowledge and that sort of thing, not a courtesy. I'd amend the, the motion to strike the word courtesy.
Thank you, I stand corrected.
Can I make a comment?
Can I, I don't know whether her hand was done. No, I didn't know whether her hand was done.
So taking out the courtesy, let me see how I would phrase that. I would use courtesy, you can, you can decide that you don't like the term courtesy. I think that's what this is about, giving a person a chance to come before us, who has sat here with us for, in my case, six years, your case, nine years, and allow her to say her piece.
And I only subject the courtesy because I, I don't want it to be implied that she's getting, we're giving her something less than a full interview, or would be giving her something less than a full interview. I would speak my mind and say, thank you for pointing out it's been nine years, or it's not nine years, it's eight years I've been sitting here, and I have worked with Reggie. Before we had a town administrator position, I worked with Reggie as chairman, and I've worked with her under both scenarios. And I can, from my own personal opinion, I've, can't even dealt with a more dedicated person in this town hall. And I would support a motion to give her an interview, a full-fledged interview, and I understand the board's decision, and I'd respect their opinions, but I've, other than, I don't know who else may have worked more closely with her over the years than I have And, yeah, you go back as far as I do. But certainly in the last round of my chairmanship, which is at least a year, I think she deserves consideration.
I'm going to talk now, and I'm going to say some things that are hard to say.
That's what we're here for.
I've, I've known Reggie a very long time, and I, I wouldn't want to lose a friendship over, about what I'm going to say.
When I sit up here, I, I sit up here for the best interests of the town, and as much as I have come to appreciate Reggie, and have become close to her, and, and I, I feel that if the process was set up to be objective, to look at the education requirements, what is needed for the job, and the subcommittee actually came up with the fact that perhaps Reggie had some of those areas where she did not meet those qualifications, I think it is in the best interests of the town to not grant a special interview for somebody who was not able to come through the interview based on qualifications. I think that, that is unfair. That is unfair to the other, other twelve people that were not offered that. And I'm sorry if that hurts you, Reggie, but I have to do what's, or say what is right and for the best interests of the town, which is to get the most qualified person here to offer the, the best possible town administrator. And I'm sorry if I hurt you. I got a motion, I got a second, any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Just a second, and, and again, it's, you know, we went into the committee saying we need to find the best person, and nobody on the committee felt that Reggie hasn't done a good job over, over the time she's been here, and we actually thought the process just took so long, it was kind of a, a negative thing to be that long. But the, the courtesy interviewer came up at the last meeting, and we talked about that, and the thought was a courtesy interview for her because she, she's been serving the role for so long. But then we brought out, okay, what will the interview provide? Well, and the answer, Reggie was kind of like, no, provide her an opportunity to go through the process because we owe it to her because she was in the position. And, and that has some, you know, some sense of fairness to it. But the other question was, if it's not going to be because she's qualified, and that we're just putting her through the process, and really she's not in the top ten, why do you want to put somebody through that just to say because you're here? I think it's, it's nicer to explain to her one-on-one, or, or whatever way we choose to do it, why we went with the, the most qualified people. So you don't want to lead somebody along, and you don't want to take the whole process and throw it out the window, because, you know, obviously, the education, the management, and the, the whole skill set is critical, and we compared it with a full job description of what this person has to do. And Reggie's done a component of that over the last year and a half, but not the full-fledged job, and there's a lot out there that we need somebody to come and grab, and we need somebody to work with the department heads and, and manage that process. And, you know, I, I think the department heads kind of have to say, and how it's been going along, too, and I've got some of that from the department heads, so I think we need to go with what's best for the town, like, like Dave was saying, and, you know, with apologies, and it sounds like, you know, we're rude or, or not considering, but I think that's what the committee did.
Well, I think you're being honest. I think you'd be misleading Reggie to think that, that, you know, and, and again, I, I don't want to hurt you, Reggie, I just, I'm just saying that if the qualifications are, are X, and, and you may not have those qualifications, I think it's, it's not, it's not in your best interests, all right, to do that. Robert?
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. I've watched the select board through the years break the rules, especially when you hired an outside consulting firm, made them ten thousand dollars, they gave you a candidate, you rejected that candidate. What are you afraid of to allow a person who you subjected to positions for the last year and a half? What are you afraid of to interview that person?
Who did we reject, Robert?
The New Hampshire consultant gave the town Southampton a name for a interview survey of who to elect as fire chief, maybe seven years ago, and you, as the select board, refused that, and you didn't pay for the money. Oh, yeah, you got to pay for instance, if it's paid for...
It came down to three candidates, Robert.
Sorry?
It came down to three candidates.
It did, but they gave you one person's...
But that, that's what they were supposed to, they were, they were supposed to screen, Robert, for it to get down to three, that was the plan. So what you're talking about is a fire chief situation?
Yes, and there have been other situations. It's an interview, nobody asked, um, for anybody in town to take on two positions for a year and a half. She did, she's here, she's stayed in through thick and thin, deserves an interview regardless.
May I just ask a question?
You may.
So, I'm wondering if, given the process, and we knew that someone was going to apply that already worked in the town hall, were the names readily available during the interview process, or were they...
The names of the candidates?
Of the applicant?
No, they were not. I didn't even open the envelopes. I, John, I...
So, when you're looking at the resumes, were their names right on the top of the resume, or did you go through the resumes and know where...
No, we haven't, I haven't seen them.
When it came through, we had all the names.
So you knew which name belonged to which applicant?
Oh, sure, so I had the, the resume.
So I'm just wondering, given the fact that Reggie's worked here for so long, perhaps maybe we could have done it a little differently, so that maybe we weren't looking at a name, and then, although it was supposed to be a biased process...
I, I, I didn't open the envelopes, I have no, other than return envelope, or return addresses that were on some, I had no idea who applied.
Yeah, but that's, that's a normal process, the committee keeps an eye on that.
All right, and I'm going to take it back from the audience at this point in time. Any further discussion on the select board's part?
Well, my, my second was based on the motion, and the original motion was to have a courtesy interview.
Well, I guess my, my question is, what's a courtesy?
Well, that's...
I mean, is it a pro forma?
It means, it means whatever we want it to mean.
I just had a respect for giving her an opportunity, just to, to say, you know, why she, she would be good for this job. I mean, if you think about it, all of these, at least with Diana, she had a secretary, so she was able to do town administration work, where Reggie had to do her job plus the other job. She was never given the opportunity to do just the town administrative work. And then she was never given the actual, um, authority to deal with all the different departments because she was never the real town administrator. So how can a person do their job if they weren't given the power to do so, when they had so many other things going on, and then people, you know, would be asking her to do this and that, and it was just overwhelming? And I think she just, we should give her a chance, a real, honest-to-goodness chance.
Further? Anything further?
Well, it, I can't second a change, I'm, I was seconding a courtesy interview. So, or where that leads us.
Well...
Because...
Then I complicated the matter myself. Because I, I resent, not resent, but I, the word courtesy just means we're going through the motions, and I don't, that's not what I'm after. If, if, if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, we're going to do it all the way, she stands at an equal footing with the other five.
But the issue is, we gave that authority to a committee, and we, and the committee is responsible for bringing us the names, and they brought us five. So this is, we have, can't have it both ways. We gave them the responsibility, these are the people that we're officially interviewing, we're not interviewing a whole slew of others. So it can't be a regu, we cannot put her, we cannot put dear Reggie up as a regular interview because it's not the system that we set up. So the only way to do it is a courtesy interview, whatever you want to interpret that.
If you want to leave the word courtesy in there, I would...
Well, I don't know at this point. Does anybody have some suggestions to get us out of this pickhole?
I suggest that you withdraw your second.
Well, I suggest that she, that she withdraw the motion of a courtesy interview if nobody's going to do that. What can we do, moderator?
Well, it, it's ambiguous, um, the word courtesy, it, it's...
So what's the definition of courtesy?
The student council in Hampshire Regional High School would not let this discussion go on more than six seconds about the word courtesy. Glad it came up, but I, you've got a motion, you've seconded it, you discussed it, you're the select board, you look forward, you can digest, I believe you need to vote.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Rob?
I disagree with, with the whole concept because it undermines the panel...
Well, that's what we're trying to get to.
Chairman, it undermines the panel, and we set the task to screen the patients, the applicants, and we undermine that by this vote.
All right, well, that's your discussion. But I still have a motion and a second on the...
And I think it's, it just undermines the committee that was set in place. It undermines the process that we set in place. It undermines just process that was done for the other nineteen, eighteen down to seventeen, or whatever applicants. It undermines all of that process.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Do I have a second, or do I have...
I'm going to...
It undermines the process.
The motion is for a courtesy interview, I'm second, seconding a courtesy interview.
All right, so that's the motion, that's it, and there's a second. Is there any further discussion by the select board? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You can't vote, Mike.
I can vote, I can't make a motion or second.
That's true.
I can vote.
Chair can always vote, you chose not to as you were chair, but a chair can always vote, Commonwealth Massachusetts.
Yeah, chair can vote, I can't make motions or seconds.
So what's special is the, do you want to take over, or do you want us to do the preliminary interviews?
I'd like your Plan B, to do the preliminary interviews.
It's up to you to vote.
Is there a motion?
Can I just, can I exemplify a part? Once the screening committee votes on names to recognize in the select board, they become public record, and interviews have to be done.
We could still do it in the public forum.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. It, it's not your intention to do them in secret?
No, 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 no. Post them in...
No, right, post it as a regular committee meeting.
Just do it in another room, we're not going to do it here.
Right, right. All right, does the board have a choice or a preference on proceeding as John has outlined? One second.
So what happens to all the other people who are more qualified, who have, that don't get interviews either? Like, why, how does it...
This is a courtesy interview.
I just got a text from an applicant...
That's the whole point.
Mike, I just got a text from an applicant asking for a courtesy interview.
Turn the phone off.
It's right here.
I'm just saying, turn, turn the phone off.
It undermines the whole process.
Well, you go ahead and make a motion then.
I'm not, no, I'm supporting the process that was in place first.
Wait a minute, what are we doing with the process?
We undermined it.
No, you can make a motion to...
All right, where are we with John's suggested process?
I like that, Plan B.
John, will you repeat your process?
Well, two options, one, I can give you the list of the five finalists with the resumes attached here, a cover letter, or secondly, we can take the five finalists to interviews, and if the five are still great, then present to the top, whatever you want, two or three, four. If they're not great, then we go down into the list a little more till we have a group of...
It sounds like a labor, because you're going to have to check references and whatnot, so that sounds like it's an appropriate thing for your committee to do, and then, once you firm up four or five applicants that would be willing to sit before us and ask to be interviewed. So, so do we have a motion somewhere?
Are we, I mean, are we giving them three, are we giving them five names? I just want to make sure.
I would say five, I would say five, but you don't know what you're going to get because the only thing is, once they go through the first process, we're going to have prescreened them, so do you want, still have five, or do you want...
No.
I think we should present three.
Three, I don't think there's any sense in coming back with five.
Three out of five, with the screening committee continuing.
I mean, because otherwise, why go through the motion, just give it to us now?
Exactly. Sounds good.
Um, Robert has a comment?
Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. Your original plan was to have the select board interview directly the recommendations from this committee that have been given to you tonight, and that, to me, seems like a good plan, since you're going to be dealing with the town administrator more than anybody in the town. So the idea that you need to step in this process now.
Mike, the process has been undermined by the research, so the process can be adjusted as we go.
David, you made your statement, but I, I don't necessarily agree with Robert, I think the, the process, we, I think it's a good idea to screen the process down with, we're into budget season and town meeting season and everything else, and I don't, this has dragged on for two years now. I, I would support letting the committee do the initial review and recommendation of three candidates.
So I guess we just need a...
And we can, in answering Robert's part, we certainly can always change our, our course down the road.
And plus, these, this screening, this is going to be public, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
And we'd be free to attend. And, you know, we didn't let, map out the whole process in ahead, we've been doing it step by step, where we go from here to here to here. So we didn't have, we're not deviating from our original process on that part of the issue. All right, so am I, do I still not have a motion here?
Motion for Plan B.
No, a motion to follow John's recommendation of interviewing, reproduce three candidates.
Right, I move that the committee chaired by John Martin screen the five candidates and present with us, present to us three.
Do you want us to screen candidates until we have three finalists? Because we may have to go...
Yeah, you may find some of those five either are not available anymore, or whatever, yeah, I think that's appropriate.
Until we have three, exactly.
All right, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to take the motion that you made into consideration, including Reggie.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's...
That was the intent of the motion, at least from my point of view. That was the intent of the motion, at least from my point of view.
What if she doesn't make it past the next screen?
We'll deal with that when the proverbial bridge approves, approaches.
So wait a minute, just timeout for a second. So if you screened the now six applicants?
We're going to go up to the top three.
And if Reggie's not in the top three, does Reggie still get an interview?
She's getting an interview in the top five.
The interview is part of the...
Top six. Five plus one. Five plus one.
So if she doesn't get through that three, does she get an interview after that?
Well, we're going to present to the top three.
I'm just saying, just for...
If she's not in the top three, that's...
That's, yeah.
It's up to the committee to present to us the top three.
Right. All right, we have to move on. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I got a payroll warrant here. It's not a payroll warrant. I have a payroll warrant, PD-13-41 for...
Michael?
Yes, George. Oh, wait, did I miss it?
Yeah, again.
Again, I did? George, you ought to raise your hand sooner. Go ahead.
I don't have anything to say. I just wanted to point it out.
Oh, thank you. I didn't, it hadn't shown up on my agenda yet.
Oh, okay.
But you have nothing, did you want to say something, George?
No, I didn't want to say anything.
Oh, all right, I did.
I thought we were going wide.
No.
You want extra, George?
Keep putting us on our toes.
Thank you, George. For a minute there, I thought I blew by it again. Payroll warrant.
I have a payroll warrant, PD-13-39 for $40,007.
1339? I have 1341.
1339.
Is that last one?
1339 is right here.
411.
There's one, there's a number of them.
Oh, wait a minute.
There's... There's PD-1339, P-1339 for another, and then P-1341.
I have P-1341.
They were right here, Michael.
Oh, they're over there.
David signed them.
Oh, so that one's done?
They're all signed.
All right, but so then I've got PD-1341 in the amount of $39,890.04.
Okay.
So you can't sign, right?
No.
Has Jackie got a problem signing this one?
Reg, it's a payroll warrant. Jackie cannot sign.
Cannot sign? So you and me?
That's fine. Dave's here.
Dave's gone.
There's several other ones here. Everything on the agenda, right, Reggie? All those warrants.
Only the payroll, Jackie cannot sign and Ed cannot sign. But the bill warrant, Jackie can sign, Ed cannot sign.
Then I have a bill warrant. And maybe that's, is that doctor's signature on there? Is that?
Yeah, that's him.
That's him? I have a bill warrant, W-1342, in the amount of $312,660.95. Jackie can sign that one.
So this is payroll, so Jackie can sign.
And this school bill is justification for the other warrant that's already there, right?
Right.
Reggie, we didn't get any bills from the roof. We did?
I've been paying them all for the school roof.
Well, the subcommittee should be seeing them before we authorize them. So in the future, make sure the subcommittee reviews.
I'll scan them and send them to you.
Okay.
No, we need to group.
I'll scan it and send it to you before it goes through the payroll process.
Wait a minute. I have a one-day alcohol permit for Conan Park for Maureen Lucy. It appears that all the paperwork is here. I have a one-day alcohol permit and a hold harmless agreement.
Do you need a motion?
Any motion to sign?
I move to sign the one-day alcohol permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All aye. Here you go.
Thank you.
That goes in there when it's done.
No, that all ends up in there when we're done. Girls, ladies. I have a... What do I have here, Reggie? From Malanson and Heathen Amendment?
That's the amendment to the audit for the $3,000 for the federal audit. However, that dollar amount is covered in the grant. So Pat Schoolanti had asked that we just acknowledge that they're doing the federal audit. And it's part of the grant, part of the PVPC grant.
So do we?
Stated in the email as confirmation that it's included.
All right, so we just need to sign this?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion to sign the amendment to the audit?
Second. I move to sign the audit for the federal share.
Any, is there a second?
There's a good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reggie, were you filling the title and all that?
You just have to...
Justice Chairman. And then we have the annual town election warrant. Robert, have you had a chance to see this?
Yes.
Okay. Wait a minute, I don't have it.
Yes, that's the annual election.
Oh, this is the election. Oh, is that the one I'm reading? Oh, the town election warrant, okay. I'm sorry. I was thinking it was the town meeting. I have the proposed, is this correct terminology? Proposed election warrant. Needs to be signed. Election is sixth day of May 2013 at the town hall. All the offices are listed. The candidates happen to be still up on the chalkboard. Polls open at noon and remain open until eight. And we need to have a motion to sign this warrant because it needs to be signed tonight.
Make a motion to sign the election warrant.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. What?
Just for the record, that's incorrect, this thing of names.
Oh, it isn't. Oh, yeah.
There's missing one and there's two that...
That one or this one? No, that has no names. It's because some have withdrawn or didn't accept the, I stand corrected.
Is there, isn't there three folks up there?
It's a caucus, no, it's only the candidates that are now...
Yeah.
Ah, yeah. In the caucus, oh, thank you.
All right. I have a disability request here and I can't mention names. So this needs to get passed along the committee. Do I have anything else, Reggie, that I missed?
In your package, you have the annual town meeting warrant.
Oh, the town meeting.
It's still in draft format.
Okay, yeah, that's been coming back and forth. I assume everybody's had a chance to look at it at least once.
Yes.
I just had some. Eileen just signed that, and then you have to sign that.
Yeah, but that's going to be in the chair. We're going to get Eileen to sign it.
She went. She started work today.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't even notice. Okay, so it's just for, then it's just for our signature.
I'll sign yours.
Does anybody, this is approving a disability for a town employee. But we should, ladies need to look at that without mentioning names. And... Has anybody got a problem or has anybody looked at the town, proposed town meeting warrant? Robert, that's the one I was going to ask you. Do you have any issues?
I have a statement or a question or a comment or whatever. Other, am I okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Robert Floyd. Other towns have a information night. We used to go back when I remember a few times where all the articles are discussed. Those who are the author of those articles, they come, or they send a representative. Nothing official, no votes. And it's an information night. As moderator, I'd be willing to host it. And I was thinking of the dates of May 9th or Thursday or May 16th. I talked with the CPA, mentioned to them formally. They seemed interested.
CPA being?
Oh, preservation.
Oh, okay.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Articles on the warrant.
Just to give and take information?
Yes, asking and, you know, nobody wins, nobody loses. The idea is you say what you want, but the idea is more of ask as many questions as you can or wish.
Right.
And the idea is to become more educated before we go into a town meeting.
Educational order.
I think that sounds like a very good...
Well...
We can try it and see what happens. Something that hurts.
No. May 9th or 16th? We don't have...
Technically, you can sign the warrant 6:30 on the...
You don't have to do anything with this one. Just look.
14th.
Yeah, right.
I know you want to sign it earlier on the 7th. So I think you'd be foolish to have it on the 9th unless the Select Board signs the warrant two weeks before the town meeting on the 7th.
Two weeks or three weeks? Two weeks?
It's one week for an annual.
Okay.
And again, you did say a couple a month ago, so you really, no matter what, you want to sign it. But things happen.
So you're suggesting maybe the 16th?
Well, no, I'm not suggesting. I'm actually leaning towards the 9th, but I just want to put my concerns on the table and see what you can...
Just out of curiosity, what night of the week is that?
Thursday.
And so have it, like, here?
Yes.
In the town hall?
Yes.
At normal time, 6:30?
6:30, 7, I think 7, just to give people a chance.
It certainly might make town meeting go faster.
Well, no argument there. That's not my point.
No.
But it can, and it may be...
Because it's...
But that's never, as a moderator, I never, you know, can care what the other... But just the idea that more information's out.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
More information's out on the street, even if it's a smaller group than expected. They have friends that you pass information on.
No, I think it's a good idea. I don't remember, I don't remember when we used to do that.
Yeah, I think we used to, we didn't do it, we did it, I think it was called a all-boards meeting. And we did that, and the public came in too. And we talked about the articles. And that if you're going to be there to present the article, if you were the author of the article, you got to be ready to, you know, defend it.
Yeah.
It was, it was used to go...
Before I got vowed, so I don't really have a lot of memories associated with it. But I read a lot of what other moderators are doing. And this is almost standard procedure for many towns, so...
The only question I have with it is, finance committee's got to be, they're not here to, you know, give their recommendations yet?
Um...
Will they have their recommendations?
I don't know.
I don't know either. Usually we get those the night of.
I can ask them and then choose the night. And I'll see what the vacancy is also, and choose the night of the night.
This would be an informational meeting, right?
Only information.
We don't have to, we have to advertise it in the paper?
No.
Okay.
No, it's not a hearing, and it's information only.
Right. No votes taken?
Correct. Not at all, not even a...
Not even a straw vote?
I would never, no.
Nope. It might be good for the presenters too.
Yeah.
I think there'd be questions.
It gives people practice, and there's nothing I see negative against it.
No?
No.
All right. Do we want a motion to support Robert and his?
I'm making a motion to support Robert and his wonderful idea to have an informational meeting. Do we have to give a date?
No, I don't think so. Subject to Robert's perusal.
Subject to Robert's...
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Our next meeting, we have a meeting on the 23rd. I actually thought they were talking about bringing the budget down to us on the 23rd.
I have it scheduled.
You have one on the 23rd and the 30th I have, but are we going to stick to that schedule?
Yes.
Are they going to be ready for the 23rd?
Bye-bye.
I'll be here, but I'm supposed to be away from... But I could be here, let you know ahead of time.
All right. And then, reminder that the Senate primary is the 30th. Seems that, can we, ooh. Can we meet on an election night? Okay. I don't know.
I thought there was a question.
There's a, no, the planning board could never meet on certain nights when...
Public hearings.
We couldn't meet.
There's, I believe, other committees can, but I believe the Select Board may not be able to meet on a holiday. Election...
Would you please just check with Eileen? There's a screw, I know in the planning board, we used to get caught every once in a while. We couldn't meet.
Yeah, hearing on a holiday.
You know, it wasn't, it was meetings, because we never had that many hearings, but... Oh, you had the grant, Ed?
I have a grant here from MEMA. It's not a big grant. It's only $2,000. But it'll help defer the cost for a portable generator and a telescopic lamp for night work or night details.
All right.
And what I need you to do is to sign here, Mike, as the chairman authorized me to sign the grant.
So I have a motion to sign the grant to get a generator?
Mike to sign?
Yeah.
Grant for a generator.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. We're going to get a generator?
More of a telescopic light with a generator attached.
Oh.
Attached to it.
Which, all right.
Reused by everybody.
We did, does anybody want to discuss budgets?
No, we should look at the budget since Reggie's under the gun to get it to him.
Yeah, where are we with your budget, Reggie? Our budget? While she's doing that, Brickyard Road, I haven't heard any more about closing, but... And the fire chief's position was reposted, correct, Reggie?
Yes. Closing day is April 24th.
Are we going to have any more motions or discussion?[1730.62]